Have everyone rise for the Pledge of Allegiance if you're not already standing. And if we could have a moment of silence for the end of our newest board member, Jill LaPlaca, of our new board member, Robert. And if you could keep our colleague Frank Holberg in your thoughts and prayers. He had a significant medical event last week and he is recovering at home, but he will be out of commission for a while. So if you could keep him and his family in your thoughts and prayers, they'd be appreciated. Thank you.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I could have someone move the agenda table, please? Moved by Vice President Moore, seconded by Dr. Trewick. Does anybody have any additions, deletions, corrections to the agenda?
Can we add Audit Committee Report?
Can I have you do that under the 5.02?
Yeah, so just before, you mean?
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll move that to the table and then you can give your report down and then we'll vote after.
Okay, thanks.
That work?
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, so I want to add 1.04, Board of Education Recognition. District Clerk Lynn Armstrong and the man of many faces, Mr. Stutzman. We'll move everything else down from 1.04 under the rest of 1.0s. Under 2.05, we're going to add amendment to the superintendence contract agreement. Under 8.02, we're going to add an impartial hearing officer resolution. And under 8.03, we're going to earn a, we're going to place a resolution for the Early Learning Center. Can I get a vote on all those in favor of the agendas? Am I did?
Yeah.
That passes six to zero. Thank you. Board recognition.
So we wanted to take the opportunity to recognize Lynn Armstrong tonight, who I, just by the look on her face, I know I'm in huge trouble. But I will be very, very clear, it was the board president who-
It's true, I had nothing to do with it.
So we felt that it was important to spend a little bit of time, particularly at a board meeting, given your role here in the district, but to also recognize some important things about your service to Greece Central School District. Number one, many of you don't know, Lynn began working here in Greece in 1986. I was in high school at Greece Central. And just as a little point of reference, she was making $4.16 for her college. She has spent a long career, 33 years in Greece, working in all different schools. So she's worked at Kirk Road, Autumn Lane, Athena. She's worked at district office. I probably don't have everything perfect and accurate, but a long career of serving and supporting all different people here in the Greece Central School District. And like I say, no matter who you are in a school district, you ultimately support kids because if you help us do our jobs, then we do better by our children and our community. A couple of things that I don't think that you're going to miss in retirement. I don't think, and I think Mike won't miss this either, that you're going to miss Tuesday night board meetings. I know that the process of the budget vote is something that you won't miss. And for those of you who don't know, this is an arduous process of preparing, coordinating, working with Monroe County elections, tons of work that goes into that. All the work that goes into board policies, board docs, records management, My Calendar, some things that are kind of ugly and difficult, I'm sure that you're not going to miss that. But I do want to say from, for me, and I know I speak for many of us, particularly here at district office who you work closely with, that there are a lot of things we will miss about you. So one is historical knowledge. 33 years in a district, to run a district, you have to know it. And you have to know history, you have to know people and players, and you do. So I could always ask you to tell me, you know, what happened or why that happened, and you'll know the whole story and the why and the people who were involved, so that I can make better decision, we can make better decisions. Strong understanding of how a board operates. Boards of education are complicated. It's not easy, and you do that incredibly well in terms of managing us, making sure we have what we need and keeping us organized. And then on a personal level, friendship and understanding. So for me, I have very few people in my world at work that I trust implicitly, that are confidential, and, and because you're just a little bit older than me, you've been through, not a lot, you've gone through life just a little bit ahead of me and have been a great mentor to me in terms of helping me with things that are going on with my kids, my parents, and everybody else. And I will truly, truly miss that. And I wish you all the best for healthy and happy retirement. And I know that you'll spend tons more time with Ryan and the rest of your family, which they'll appreciate too. So thank you.
I could say almost everything that Kathy said as well. I was also in high school at Olympia though, a different school when you started. But on behalf of the board and the district, I would like to congratulate you on your retirement. Lynn, like Kathy says, she knows everything. She knows where everything came from, how it happened, how we got to a certain point. And that's one of the things in my 12 years on the Board of Education I've come to really appreciate is understanding the backstory. A lot of times the backstory, and Lynn, if you know Lynn, she gives you to you, no filter. You get the whole story. And on a personal note, I want to say, when I came on the board 12 years ago, I was relatively an unknown guy. I was a parent, I was a firefighter, and Lynn was the only person that truly made me feel welcome when I got elected to the Board of Education. The board at that time was very partisan, it was very, it was a difficult Board of Education to work with, but Lynn always took the time to answer my questions and help me and became a great sounding board, and I consider her a dear friend after my time on the board. And as a board president, to have a clerk like Lynn Armstrong, I've had another clerk, and Lynn Armstrong does a fabulous job. It makes my job as board president so much easier when preparing for meetings, when doing everything we have to do as a Board of Education, when you have someone as strong as Lynn is in the position. So I'm going to greatly miss that. She's also great when it comes to our documents, and then when you talk about the budget vote, the capital improvement votes, she does that. She's so efficient and does it without a hitch that it's going to be truly missed. And finally, at this point, because Kathy threw me under the bus, I'm going to wrap this up. I wish you great joy in your retirement, spending time with your lovely grandson and the rest of your family and enjoying your guarding. You're going to be truly missed. Congratulations.
So our second recognition, we wanted to at least take a moment to recognize Dick Stutzman. So for those of you who don't know, Dick started working in Greece the first year when I started as superintendent. So he has been with us for four years now in an interim way, which sounds pretty full-time to me. But you have served in a number of different capacities in our system, all for different reasons, at different times that we've needed. And we just wanted to make sure that we publicly said thank you, because no matter what we've needed, whether it be some help down in transportation, whether it be up here, you have come through and been awesome to us. And we know Susan is waiting for you and would like you home more, but, but we appreciate all that you've given us and what you continue to do to support us in the district. So thank you, Dick.
I just want to add to everything Kathy just said. Dick, you came in, Kathy was a brand-new superintendent, you have a ton of experience, you could have pushed in, you helped, you mentored Kathy tremendously. And from a board president standpoint, working with a new superintendent, we've had a ton of turnover in superintendents in my time on the board. And for you to come in here and mentor Kathy and be such a team player, filling so many roles for us, has been greatly appreciated. I know you don't always feel that way, but from me, I greatly appreciated everything you've done and the mentoring you gave Kathy and all the help you gave the board. Thank you, I wish you the best in East Rochester, and maybe we'll bring it back for something next year. Congratulations.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Munnings, I am part of Greece Council PTA.
And I'm Jay Woodcock, part of Greece Council PTA.
Twice a year, Greece Council PTA recognizes four students from different schools who have been nominated by their classroom teachers and their school communities. Keep on.
I can start. We just want to welcome all you people for being here. There's so many of you. We're glad you came here just for this, so. So-
They're all here.
They're all here?
They're all here.
Good. So I'm going to butcher some names, I apologize already. So Emma Figler, nominated by Karen Adams. Emma is a first grader at Autumn Lane School. She has demonstrated positive values in her classroom. Emma has always exceeded her expectations, is constantly making choices to help her, help her Autumn Lane community, teachers, and peers. Her ability to show empathy towards other is very commendable. She, she authors and helps others in need of other academics or social environmental, and she helps with other social environmental support. Her ability to listen first, then respond, is amazing. Emma is a true leader. Emma takes personal responsibility for learning. Her demonstration and perseverance in reason she is currently reading at grade level. She has shared with me that she has responsibilities at home. My kids have responsibilities too, but I think Emma's probably better, this is why Emma's getting this award. It is her responsibility to read every night. I was so impressed with the idea that the first grader could make the decision to practice reading every night. It's because of her perseverance and determination that she was made such a great gains in reading this year. Emma is an example of Greece central student who's truly outstanding. Emma, congratulations. So one thing I didn't, I probably failed to mention, is that everyone's here tonight, the other three students, of course Emma, have been nominated by administrators or teachers or someone in their school. And I know a couple of these people have been nominated a couple of times on the same nomination.
I'm going to do them today.
You're going to do those? Okay.
You want me to do one first? Or you want to do your next one?
I led into it, so it's all yours.
So the next two students from Autumn Lane have been nominated three times by three different people. So I'm going to kind of mishmash their stuff together. These next two students give up 10 minutes of their lunch and 15 minutes of their recess every other day to help out in PE class and in music class. They help an 811 autism class and their students. They both help set up equipment, but more importantly, work one-on-one with these students, providing them with positive peer interaction. They are both wonderful role models and go above and beyond what is expected of them. Lily Linville and Hannah Myers.
So the last student, his name is Robert Small, and I will read what I believe a teacher administrator doesn't say right here said about him. Robert is a bucket full, Robert's a bucket filler who exhibits positive behavior in helping another student in the bathroom. He demonstrated a high value to helping a fellow Autumn Lane student out who was scared of dangerous situation in the boys' bathroom. I believe Robert Small has proven he is an outstanding, caring, and courageous student. He emphasized a good deed award program as a caring, responsible young person. Congratulations. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to Residence Forum, can I have Mrs. Julie Weller? Give her a minute to try to get to the front. If we could clear that back walkway. Hello. And you are?
Rashawna Green.
Okay. You are second on my list. Julie, do you want?
Oh, that's fine. I thought you were, I thought that I missed her name because last time we went in alphabetical order, so I figured I must have missed it. Excellence without equity is just privilege. This is a quote that I learned in Ithaca when I was sent there last year by the district. Three minutes is really hard, guys. So we need action. I know that some of you get the equity work, I know that some of you don't necessarily get it, and I'm giving you a list of websites where you can look it up. If you haven't looked at our data, you really need to look at our data. So how about you're in a car accident? I just hit you with my car, you're bleeding out. How long do we spend on the conversation about what we should do? There's cars that want to get by, do we wait before we put flares out and stop the traffic? Do we think about how it's going to inconvenience those passersby? Or do I call an ambulance and get done what I need to get done? Do we stand there and pat ourselves on the back just for talking about this ugly situation? You really don't look good there, laying on the ground. Do we, do we pat ourselves on the back? Wow, look at us, we're looking at this blood, this is great. Do we check our budget? Do we make sure that you have insurance? Do we blame your parents for not teaching you to get out of our way? This is life and death. The equity work, the equity effort, is nothing less than life and death. And it may be true that you can't legislate integration, but you can legislate desegregation. It may be true that morality cannot be legislated, but behavior can be regulated. It may be true that the law cannot change the heart, but it can restrain the heartless. It may be true that the law can't make a man love me, but it can restrain him from lynching me, and I think that's pretty important also. So while the law may not change the hearts of men, it does not change the habits of men. When you change the habits of men, pretty soon the attitudes and the hearts will be changed. And so there is a need for strong legislation constantly to grapple with the problems we face. We're asking to stop suspensions. If you can figure out how to stop suspensions for vaping, you can figure out how to stop suspensions for our kids shooting rubber bands across the room, or calling somebody fat when they just called the N-word. You know how to stop the suspensions. They need to stop. We're criminalizing our students, we're sending them straight to prison. Get trained in restorative practices. You know how to treat teachers with problematic behaviors. You need to start treating the students with the same respect.
Your time's up, Mrs. Weller.
Okay.
Thank you. Ms. Green?
Just to follow up on what Mrs. Weller had to say about restorative practices. So I know that the district can practice restorative practices because I actually see it used with other students. So I actually had something planned that I was going to say, but it got replaced because I was sent a screenshot of a text regarding a situation where two young girls had a physical altercation. That physical altercation led to a six-day suspension for the first set of girls. Then, and this is one of, both of the two parties that are corresponding or communicating in this email were involved in the separate incident. So these other, the other party also had a physical altercation. That led to a one-day suspension. And they were told, so this, one young lady, these are, these are girls, was told that the reason, it was only one day, because we didn't have school the next day or the day after that, LMAO, so they didn't want to drag it out. So when, there are plenty of examples, and this is just one example, example of the discrepancy when it comes to how students of color are treated versus white students. Obviously, I'm saying this because the student that was, the two students that were suspended for the six days in the same building were black students. And the two students that were suspended one day for a physical altercation were white students. Give me an explanation for that. So while we have the CRE, the CRE training, is it enough? Because those building leaders sign off on all of those suspensions. That building leader signed off on the suspension for six days versus the suspension for one day. Why? And that's all I have to say.
We are Greece. We know Greece because we also are Greece.
Mrs. Weller, you had your opportunity to speak. It's Mrs. Johnson's opportunity to speak now.
Mrs. Johnson isn't able to make it tonight.
All right then.
All right.
Mr. Reuter? Is there a Mr. Reuter here that would like to speak? He signed up. Give him a minute to come from across the way. All right, swing and a miss. And Ms. Kyla Harris?
Where's the light?
Right in front of you, right there.
Okay. Hello, my name is Kyla Harris. I'm a guardian of a senior at Odyssey Academy, as well as an educator for the last eight years. Tonight I would like to speak in support of an exceptional teacher at Odyssey, who was in the news recently because of an incident with a student. This educator is a highly respected and valued member of the Odyssey community. His rapport with students has allowed him to be loved by students regardless if he taught them or not. It is not uncommon to hear about all the good this man has done in the school and around the Greece community. He truly cares about his, about the students and the academic profession. I emailed each of you with many examples of the positive contributions he has made. In the last four years, I have heard about this teacher from my nephew and his friends almost on a daily basis. Never once have I heard something that worried me. When I saw the news, I was shocked and also worried about how my nephew would react when he heard what his favorite teacher was going through. I couldn't believe a teacher as loved as he is and with his highly effective classroom management would be put in a situation where he felt he had to take an extreme measure to keep the students who were there to learn safe from a student who was not supposed to be there. After talking to my nephew, I found out the news failed to accurately report the whole story, resulting in the teacher being portrayed negatively. I know that Greece is a district where student learning is the goal, and it is always so heartwarming to know that students have rights. But I must insist the dedicated teachers who spend their free time, past their contractual time, to make student learning the goal have rights too. The incident that occurred a few weeks ago, I fear, has caused the rights of the teacher and of all the students who want to learn from this exceptional teacher to be taken away. There are always exceptions, and we let our student, our children see that, but we also need to stand true to those who go above and beyond what this profession calls for. This teacher is an amazing educator, mentor, and role model to students and staff. That incident is one I know we never want to face. As a guardian and as an educator, I have the unique opportunity that a lot of parents in Greece don't. I can view this as from both perspectives, and I can honestly say I fully support the teacher and I want him back in the classroom. I, along with hundreds of parents, teachers, and current Odyssey students and former Odyssey students, hope the district can come up with a plan to bring him back to the classroom. I thank you for this opportunity to speak, and I look forward to hearing from all of you with a positive outcome on this matter.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Moving on to 2.01, can I just sort of move the filing, please? Be it resolved, Board of Education, oh, I missed my, I missed all my important people that want to talk. I got ahead of myself. GTA, is Mr. Eberts here? Nope. Mr. Lombardo? You're way better looking.
Thank you, you are too. Here tonight to just speak to the board as the Vice President for Public Relations for the GTA, and wanted to share with you something we've been working on recently, an initiative we've done with some other locals and even the facilities folks here in Greece. We got a grant from an organization called First Book. We got something on the order of 18,700 books, about $200,000 worth of brand-new books that we've been distributing to all of our schools. They're getting, given out to our kids at social, ice cream socials, community events, sending home new bags of books for our new registrants, things like that. So it's something we're very proud of that we're hoping can really benefit our students. Thanks.
Thank you. GASSA, is there someone here from GASSA that would like to speak this evening?
Good evening. Good evening Superintendent Groutmann, Superintendents Cabinet, and Board of Education members. I am here this evening to share the good on behalf of GASSA. As the year winds down, there are a lot of exciting events that have happened or will be happening in our schools and across our district. At Brookside, Brookside held a cultural day representing the diverse cultures in their building and district. Students and their families presented the information to the entire school community. Also, the fourth and fifth grade students auditioned and performed the musical, "The Best Little Theater in Town." They also had pastry with parents and held this event on two days so that they could accommodate the entire school community. At Olympia, Olympia partnered with the Greece Police, Ridge Road Fire Department, Monroe Ambulance, and several other community members to host a DWI awareness assembly and crash reenactment. This powerful event was held prior to the junior and senior prom and reminded students about the importance of making positive and healthy choices. This past Friday, seniors completed their reflective conferences, an opportunity for the members of the class of 2019 to share the profound ways the Greece Central School District has shaped who they are and what they aspire to achieve in the years to come. From the Department of Reading and Response to Intervention, Suzanne Pettifer would like to report that there is an expansion of ERLA to grades first through fourth, and we're extremely pleased to announce that training has begun. Community Schools, Barnes &amp; Noble kickoff for the summer reading program was last week, and we were so proud to have parents, teachers, and students join us for that evening. At English Village, they have a list of things that they're willing to celebrate- At English Village, they have a list of things that they're willing to celebrate with everyone tonight. They have been participating in book studies and professional development on culturally responsive education and reading strategies. They held a third-grade orientation in collaboration with Lake Shore. The second year end of school, there was a celebration dance, pre-kindergarten, kindergarten, and second grade moving up ceremonies. They also celebrated the retirement of Principal Cheryl Hurst and Wendy Sullivan, speech therapist. They held caring kids and offered awards for that recognition. And also, as part of family engagement and community schools initiative, they held their first coffee conversation yesterday morning, and tomorrow afternoon will be holding a tea talk with parents. At Athena, there have been school-wide accomplishments. The food pantry, clothing, and prom dress closet has really taken off to benefit students and families in need, and admin have worked very closely with GTA and AGCEP throughout the year to review, review school-wide data, programs, and student supports for the purposes of determining strengths and growth opportunities. Both Longridge and Lake Shore held leadership days aligned with the Leader in Me initiative where student speakers opened the day and led the school community through classroom visits and student presentations. The Department of School to Career Pathways, led by Kathy Richardson, they held an access to college experiences at Monroe Community College, and this was an end-of-year celebration and ceremony to highlight the success of students as they say goodbye and leave the program, continue, to continue on their journeys. From the Group of Equity and Family Engagement, on May 29th, we hosted our first family, Families of Color meeting. This mission for this group is to bring together a strong collective of parents and concerned family members that have a passion around equity and creating that across our district community. This conversation was open to adults and school-aged students. We had Sally Brothers, the Mosaics from Arcadia High School, and National Honor Society students from Athena High School that facilitated student group conversations. At the close of the meeting, there were suggestions on ways that we could make improvements here in our district. There were approximately 36 participants that engaged in conversation, and happily we look forward to future meetings. And take note, at Arcadia, you have an invitation. The invitation is for the board and the superintendent and her cabinet to celebrate Friday, June 14th, the Senior Bash. There will be plenty of games, food, and fun, beginning at 11 o'clock and ending at 2:00 p.m., and this will all take place behind the school. As a GASSA unit, we want to publicly acknowledge the great work and years of service for both Cheryl Hurst and Sue Stryker. Their talent and dedication to students, families, and our district community will greatly be missed. We are so proud that we were able to call them our colleagues and wish them happiness in their retirement. And in closing, GASSA enjoys working alongside GTA, AGCEP, and GASS, Superintendent and the Superintendent's Cabinet, as well as the Board of Education, to support our school-based, district-based, and community programs. We thank you for sharing with us another great year.
Thanks, Tom. Is there anybody here from AGCEP? GASS? And Teamsters? Moving on, item 2.01, can I have someone move the staffing detail, please? Be resolved, Board of Education, Greece Central School District approves the staffing appointments. Can I have someone move that? Moved by Dr. Truick, seconded by Mrs. Farmer. Any comments, questions, or concerns on that? Seeing not all of us in favor? That passes six to zero. I think I'm going to move tenure to the end because I think everybody is here for that, and I like looking at so many people. So I figured we'll just do that, the last thing we do for tonight.
President McCain, we did appoint four assistant principals this evening.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry.
Okay, so what I'd like to do is to read a few bios. The first person we would like to recognize who was appointed tonight is Catherine Gilbert. Is Catherine here with us this evening? Catherine received her Bachelor's of Science in Childhood Education and Special Education at SUNY Genesee, a Master's Degree in Literacy B6, and studied K-12 Building and District Leadership through the Clinically Rich Urban Leadership Program. Catherine comes to us from the Rochester City School District where she currently works as a literacy coach and brings with her 13 years of teaching experience. Catherine's mom, sister, brother-in-law, two nieces, and two nephews all live in Victor. They enjoy getting together weekly to eat, share stories, laugh, and enjoy time together. Outside of the typical workday, Catherine tends to do more work. She is continually supporting the growth of schools and growing professionally through reading, conferences, and work in coursework. She also enjoys arts and crafts, especially involving painting, graphic design, and interior design. Catherine is looking forward to learning from her new colleagues and incorporating the knowledge and resources that she offers to enhance the opportunities for students and to maximize their growth. We are very happy to have Catherine join the leadership team at Greece, and we know she will make a great addition to the Autumn Lane and Craig Hill School communities. Congratulations, Catherine. Next, I'd like to recognize Daniel Keelin. Is Daniel with us this evening? Hi, Daniel. Dan received his Bachelor's Degree in Elementary Education from Oswego State University, a Master's Degree in Elementary Education at SUNY Brockport, and attended the University of Rochester's Warner School for his school building leader certification. Dan has spent the first part of his career at Wayne Central School District, working as a teacher at grade three, five, and gained administrative experience working as the dean of students for the past few years. Outside of work, Dan enjoys coaching baseball and volunteering with Cub Scouts. He is very active through athletics, basketball, softball, golf, bowling, tennis, and volleyball. Dan also loves the outdoors, including fishing and spending time with friends and family. Dan, with his wife Rachel, have their, have twin 13-year-old sons Jacob and Lucas and their dog AJ. They're very active with their sporting events and tournaments and take them traveling to different states. Dan is looking forward to becoming an active member of the community, working with families and staff to support our students and building relationships with students to help them increase their achievement in the classroom and achieve their goals. We are very happy to have Dan, Dan join the leadership team here at Greece, and we know he will make a great addition to the English Village and Lake Shore School communities. Congratulations, Dan. Next, Carolyn Preston. Hi, Carolyn. Carolyn attended St. Bonaventure University to receive a Bachelor's Degree in Biology and a Master's in Secondary Education. Carolyn received a Master's Degree in Educational Administration from Kinesius College. Carolyn has taught for Greece for 14 years. She currently works as a teacher leader at Arcadia Middle and High, developing professional development to teach students, or excuse me, teach staff and working directly in classrooms to target social and emotional learning lessons based on the needs of the class. Carolyn has presented professional development on social-emotional learning statewide via Zoom video conferencing. The rest of her spare time is spent enjoying time outdoors with her husband Dustin and kids David, Daniel, and Madeline. Carolyn's husband and kids are as excited as she is to have the opportunity to continue to be an Arcadia Titan. Carolyn is working, is looking forward to growing as a leader and continuing to, the great work that is already happening in Greece. The social-emotional learning and equity work have always been her passion. She is excited to have the opportunity to be part of this work. We are happy to have, that Caroline will continue her career here with the Greece Central Schools and bring her vast experience to her new role. She will be placed at Arcadia Middle where she has built strong relationships. Congratulations, Carolyn. And our fourth individual is Samaya Rumph. There she is. Samaya attended Nazareth College to obtain her Bachelor's of Science in Sociology and a Master's of Science in Education. She received a Master of Science in Educational Leadership from St. John Fisher College. Samaya started in Greece last fall and currently worked this past school year as a fourth-grade teacher at Lake Shore Elementary. Prior to coming to Greece, Samaya taught for 12 years in the Rochester City School District, teaching grades three through six curriculum writing, modeled and taught restorative practices to staff and students. Outside of the workday, Samaya enjoys family time, crafting, reading, baking, photography, and working with youth. Samaya and her husband Eric have two children, Jalen nine and Jada four. Samaya is looking forward to building relationships with students, staff, and families, and community members, and making a positive impact in the lives of the students. We are happy that Samaya has been recommended for the assistant principal position at Westridge in Pinebrook, as she continues her career with the Greece Central School District in her personal and professional growth. Congratulations, Samaya.
If I could have the four come up and take a picture with the superintendent? Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations, Mrs. Moving on, item 2.02, I think the reason most of you are here this evening. Can I have someone move the file, please? Be resolved, Board of Education, the Greece Central School District approves the tenure appointments. Moved by Mr. Swick, seconded by Mr. Bell. Is there any comments, questions, or concerns? I'm just going to make one comment. Is Sarah Zink here? Sarah, I want to say thank you. In four years, you had two half-sick days, and you had more professional development than anybody. I was thoroughly impressed by that, and I want to say thank you for being here. Anything else? You can't be sick now tomorrow. All those in favor? That passes six to zero. Mr. Stutzman?
Yes. First off, I personally want to congratulate each person who is here this evening who was granted tenure. Having been in education for at least a year or two, I really know and appreciate the work that each and every one of you did to achieve this tremendous milestone in your career. And personally, congratulations. So what I'd like to do is, I would like to read each name. And I think we have approximately 28 people here this evening who were granted tenure. So what I'm going to do is-
Can I interrupt you? So this is an anomaly. We don't usually have 28 people here. So what we're going to do, I think what makes the most sense, just from the teacher in me, when Mr. Stutzman calls your name, because what we'd like to do is recognize each and every one of you, if you could come up and sort of line right around here, and then we'll, sort of at the end, we'll do a bigger recognition with everybody up there, and then we can take pictures and do all of that at that point, too.
You forgot to say they have to each make a speech.
But you know what? And I'll do mine now, just before he starts reading. It's important, I'm so glad to see so many people here. So number one, showing up is a huge deal. And, and like our board president said, showing up for work is a big deal, but just showing up to any event. This is an important recognition and not one that we take lightly as an organization. For every person here who's being granted tenure, you have been through multiple people who have observed you, who have worked directly with you, who've observed and like taken a fine-tooth comb through the paperwork that's been put forward, who've reviewed every PD that you've gone to, and have looked at you sort of as a big picture in terms of the best of the best. And we've said, we want the best of the best in Greece. We need the best of the best for our kids and for our community. So the fact that you have been recommended is a huge accomplishment. We want to congratulate you. We want to make sure that we keep our standards this high always. So thank you for your hard work. Thank you for all that you've put into this profession and to our kids up to now, and I look forward to many, many years of you being here with us in Greece. And with that, I'll turn it over to Dick to-
Well, thank you.
Read names.
Stephanie Amico. Megan Caulfield. Melissa D'Ambrosio. Sky Raven Dre. Caitlin Evershed. Tracy Fishman. Jennifer Gates. Ellie Hamilton. Alexis HoShaw. Megan Kasperkowski. Courtney Larkin. Bethany Megan. Lauren McCormick. Emily Norts. Kelly O'Connor. Sean O'Donnell. Stacy Padgett. Alyssa Pogal. Andrea Papalizio. Mary Recor. Samantha Robertson. Dana Ryan. Nicole Saint-Arnade. Amy Tierney. Shanna Tidings. Amber Walther. Caitlin Watkins. And Sarah Zink. Did we miss anybody?
Yeah, we get it. We get it. We get almost a double tap for that. If you guys would like, you could feel free to leave and celebrate. Or unless you want to stay, don't all jump up at once.
Stay in peace.
Since 2017, 98 Greece Central School District students have earned this wonderful credential, which claims to the world they are bilingual, which, again, is a tremendous attribute in today's world. So what exactly is the Seal of Bilinguality? In 2015, it was signed into law by Governor Cuomo, and it was established to recognize high school graduates who meet the criteria as established by the Board of Regents. New York State was the 30th state in the Union to approve of the Seal of Bilinguality. It is a district decision to offer the seal. This was something I felt was very important to offer to our students and to our residents to have the seal. So we are extremely, extremely proud of that. Why offer the seal, then? This was part of the decision. It is a statement that is made by our school system that mastery of two languages is important. And again, in our world, this is truly critical. It honors the skills that our students attain, which is a high level of proficiency in listening, speaking, reading, and writing, in addition to English in one or more different languages. It could be evidence of skills that are attractive to future employers and to colleges, and certainly colleges are looking at those types of advanced language skills for admissions. It prepares students with 21st century skills, and I think most importantly, it affirms a value of diversity in a multilingual society in which we live. So truly, truly commendable. If you're curious as to which languages that our students presented and studied and tested in at the IB level, which is no small feat, and I'm hearing it from our interpreters who are extraordinarily impressed by the level of rigor that our students underwent in this process, you can see from the list that we, this particular cohort, tested and presented in these following languages. I'd be curious to know if you could match the language to a particular country, but I can tell you, we hit every corner of the globe, including Afghanistan, and Vietnam, and Yemen, and Bosnia, and Ethiopia, just to name a few. And these are our students in our midst, and we, again, we are extraordinarily proud of these students and their teachers. I should also say, we could not do it without the work of the teachers who work steadily and steadfastly with our students. This evening, one of our newly tenured teachers, Ms. Tracy Fishman, is one of the ASL teachers at Olympia High School, who's been there with us from the beginning in this process. And I would like to recognize you, Tracy, for all your efforts as well. And so, with that, I introduce to you the 2019 cohort of Seal of Bilinguality Awardees from each of our four high schools, representing all those languages. And they went through, as I said, a rigorous year-long process. It takes a year to complete this process, and everyone has a role to play. But again, as a resident, and as an employee, and as a teacher, an administrator, I could not be more proud of our students in this process. So congratulations to all the students noted here in the New York State Seal of Bilinguality.
Thank you. 4.01, food service presentation. Superintendent Groutman?
Yes, I'm gonna introduce Paul Palmer. I have a couple things to say, so Paul, while you come up. So, food service presentation seems sort of a little arbitrary, but yeah, we know one of the most important things that our kids need is to be fed and nourished in order for them to actually learn. Paul has worked for several years now to add programming that he's gonna share with us tonight. Some pretty amazing things that we're doing in Greece that you really can't find around the county, and very little around the state. The other thing that I want to mention about Paul and his work, which he may not mention, because he probably won't brag about this, but most food service programs are embedded in school districts and are used basically the general fund. So there's a cost that the district is paying out. Paul has worked really single-handedly with this department to make sure that it's self-sustaining, so that it really doesn't hit our general fund, which is quite an accomplishment, and he's done so without raising prices for kids and families. So I say that just as a little bit of context, but what this presentation is gonna do is help us to understand sort of the scope of what we do day-to-day with our kids, and also some of the special things that we have continued to add and grow as a district in order to help our kids and families. So, thank you, Paul, for being here.
Thank you very much for having me, allowing me to take up not too much of your time. I didn't know if I should be offended or relieved when I saw the crowd leave. I'm gonna go with relieved on that one. So, just allow me, I'm gonna kind of give you just a department overview, what we're working on, what we're looking to work on in the future. And in the end, I have a small, like a four-minute video, because we put a tremendous amount of work from the food service department, that we have put decor upgrades into the cafeteria. So I want to take a little time for you to get to see some before and after. So I'll try to keep the beginning of the presentation somewhat brief. Food service participates, we're in the National School Lunch and Breakfast Program, which is administrated by the United States Department of Agriculture. What that means is there's nutritional requirements that we have to meet. And in doing so, we get state and mostly federal reimbursement as a result of that. So all of the food that we serve in this district meets or exceeds the nutritional guidelines for the federal government. We only get that reimbursement if the children go through the line and participate. So our initiative, when everybody will say, well, how did you do that? They gotta eat. They gotta like the food, they gotta participate. I consider our department's job is to serve the kids what they like, but make it nutritionally healthy for them. And that drives everything, revenue. And you'll see a theme throughout this presentation. But numbers to it, we are a $4.6 million self-supporting, when I say profitable, operation, meaning anything that we have goes back into the program, either in the means of equipment, decor, upgrade, marketing, labor, anything else that we can do with that. We are a 55% free and reduced meals percentage in the district. To get some perspective, I started here in 2003, we were 18. We're changing as a district, and the department has changed along with that. To brag a little, we're the lowest, we have the lowest breakfast and lunch prices in the county. We have not raised our prices since 2014. How do we do that? We try to find other revenue sources that can offset some of our direct expenses. Currently, we have about 130 department employees. Programs served, breakfast and lunch, we serve breakfast and lunch in all 17 of our schools. With that, we also, every one of our cafeterias and kitchens is self-supporting in that they make their own food. Everything that we can do, we try not to make anything that's frozen pizzas or anything like that. As much as we're able to produce our own food, we do that. A child doesn't want to know where that hidden sandwich came from in the back. We want to make it in front of them, so they know. Same thing with pizzas and everything else. So we don't have any central kitchen somewhere where it's making sloppy joes bulk and then shipping it to the schools. No, we make everything, we make everything ourself in each individual school, and they take pride in that. We serve the Phoenix Academy students. We run the kitchen program at Renaissance Academy School of the Arts. We have been providing the food, both breakfast and lunch, to Greece Christian School for a number of years, Ridgecrest Academy Bosse's, and the Montessori School. And that's the first 10 months of the year. What does that mean statistically? I love to throw these numbers if I speak to other groups. We serve over 700,000 complete breakfasts every year, not including the summer. We, 1.34 million lunches, and we do about 3,000 à la carte transactions of milk, piece of pizza, you know, something like that. So annually, we do almost 2,500,000 annual transactions in 10 months, eight and a half months, when we're actually not on break. So we're busy. All right? I want, I put this slide up for a little bit about, which I think Kathy was alluding to, with the community eligible provision, acronym of CEP. This is a federal program where students in a particular school, if that school's enrollment meets eligibility requirements, where every child in that school can have free breakfast and lunch regardless of socioeconomic conditions. Little different than free and reduced percentage in that this is a percentage that's driven by, eligibility is driven by a percentage of children in that school who may be eligible through Medicaid, or food stamps, or homeless, something other than direct income. I'm happy to say that we applied last year, and we're completing this year, where Longridge, Lake Shore, EV, and Westridge, were all CEP schools this past year, extremely successful, you know, in both operationally and feeding kids. The slide is a little old, because yesterday I found out that we were accepted, we applied to expand the CE program to the remaining elementary schools who were eligible, and we received the approval. So we will be moving forward with five other additional elementary schools for next year. So that's exciting. Other programs. Summer Free Breakfast and Lunch Program. Any child ages five to 18 can come into, it's Westridge this year, and receive a free breakfast and lunch, no questions asked. Okay? We started that program, I believe, about five years ago, and we'll continue with that. Free Afternoon Elementary Snack Program. We do that in each one of those original CEP schools, where any child who's staying after school for any type of programming, or tutoring, or anything, they are, we get a free snack for those children as well to stay. Likewise, we want to expand that to the additional schools going forward as well. Twilight Academy. We do have some secondary school free options as well. We had Olympia, I think, two years ago, maybe three years ago, their Twilight Academy Free Afternoon Program, Free Afternoon Snack Program, and we opened it up to Odyssey this year. And then catering, anything we can do for catering. My staff love catering, so that's an additional, and they take pride in their catering. Future projects and programs. Meeting with Food Link, trying to coordinate a partnership with them where we can do some weekend meals program, and some way to partner with them. Had our first meeting last week, and hopefully that'll be something that we'll be able to work out that makes sense for both of us. I alluded to this, expanding the CEP program for elementary and secondary. Elementary is done. And we will be looking at secondary schools in 2021, probably targeting Olympia at that point. Olympia will be going through a renovation next year, which will make it a little difficult when we're, our kitchen will be at- So, food service presentation seems sort of a little arbitrary, but yeah, we know one of the most important things that our kids need is to be fed and nourished in order for them to actually learn. Paul has worked for several years now to add programming that he's going to share with us tonight. Some pretty amazing things that we're doing in Greece that you really can't find around the county and very little around the state. The other thing that I want to mention about Paul and his work, which he may not mention, because he probably won't brag about this, but most food service programs are embedded in school districts and are used basically the general fund. So there's a cost that the district is paying out. Paul has worked really single-handedly with this department to make sure that it's self-sustaining, so that it really doesn't hit our general fund, which is quite an accomplishment. And he's done so without raising prices for kids and families. So I say that just as a little bit of context, but what this presentation is going to do is help us to understand sort of the scope of what we do day-to-day with our kids and also some of the special things that we have continued to add and grow as a district in order to help our kids and families. So, thank you, Paul, for being here.
Thank you very much for having me, allowing me to take up not too much of your time. I didn't know if I should be offended or relieved when I saw the crowd leave. I'm going to go with relieved on that one. So, just allow me, I'm going to kind of give you just a department overview, what we're working on, what we're looking to work on in the future. And in the end, I have a small, like a four-minute video, because we've put a tremendous amount of work from the food service department, that we have put decor upgrades into the cafeteria. So I want to take a little time for you to get to see some before and after. So I'll try to keep the beginning of the presentation somewhat brief. Food service participates, we're in the National School Lunch and Breakfast Program, which is administrated by the United States Department of Agriculture. What that means is there's nutritional requirements that we have to meet. In doing so, we get state and mostly federal reimbursement as a result of that. So all of the food that we serve in this district meets or exceeds the nutritional guidelines for the federal government. We only get that reimbursement if the children go through the line and participate. So, our initiative, when everybody will say, "Well, how did you do that?", they got to eat. They got to like the food, they got to participate. I consider our department's job is to serve the kids what they like, but make it nutritionally healthy for them. And that drives everything, revenue, and you'll see a theme throughout this presentation. But numbers to it, we are a $4.6 million self-supporting, when I say profitable operation, meaning anything that we have goes back into the program, either in the means of equipment, decor, upgrade, marketing, labor, anything else that we can do with that. We are a 55% free and reduced meals percentage in the district. To get some perspective, I started here in 2003, we were 18. We're changing as a district and the department has changed along with that. To brag a little, we're the lowest, we have the lowest breakfast and lunch prices in the county. We have not raised our prices since 2014. How do we do that? We try to find other revenue sources that can offset some of our direct expenses. Currently, we have about 130 department employees. Programs served, breakfast and lunch, we serve breakfast and lunch in all 17 of our schools. With that, we also, every one of our cafeterias and kitchens is self-supporting in that they make their own food. Everything that we can do, we try not to make anything that's frozen pizzas or anything like that, as much as we're able to produce our own food, we do that. A child doesn't want to know where that hidden sandwich came from in the back. We want to make it in front of them so they know, same thing with pizzas and everything else. So, we don't have any central kitchen somewhere where it's making sloppy joes bulk and then shipping it to the schools, no. We make everything, we make everything ourselves in each individual school and they take pride in that. We serve the Phoenix Academy students, we run the kitchen program at Renaissance Academy School of the Arts, we have been providing the food, both breakfast and lunch, to Greece Christian School for a number of years, Ridgecrest Academy Bosse's, and the Montessori School, and that's the first 10 months of the year. What does that mean statistically? I love to throw these numbers if I speak to other groups. We serve over 700,000 complete breakfasts every year, not including the summer. We, 1.34 million lunches, and we do about 3,000, I'm sorry, 3,000 à la carte transactions, a milk, piece of pizza, you know, something like that. So annually, we do almost 2,500,000 annual transactions in 10 months, eight and a half months when we're actually not on break. So we're busy, alright? I want to, I put this slide up for a little bit about, which I think Kathy was alluding to, with the community eligible provision, acronym of CEP. This is a federal program where students in a particular school, if that school's enrollment meets eligibility requirements, where every child in that school can have free breakfast and lunch, regardless of socioeconomic conditions. Little different than free and reduced percentage in that this is a percentage that's driven by, eligibility is driven by a percentage of children in that school who may be eligible through Medicaid or food stamps or homeless, something other than direct income. I'm happy to say that we, we applied last year and we're completing this year, where Longridge, Lakeshore, EV, and Westridge, we're all CEP schools this past year, extremely successful, you know, in both operationally and feeding kids. The slide is a little old, because yesterday I found out that we were accepted, we applied to expand the CE program to the remaining elementary schools who were eligible, and we received the approval, so we will be moving forward with five other additional elementary schools for next year, so that's exciting. Other programs, summer free breakfast and lunch program. Any child ages 5 to 18 can come into, it's Westridge this year, and receive a free breakfast and lunch, no questions asked, okay? We started that program, I believe, about five years ago, and we'll continue with that. Free afternoon elementary snack program, we do that in each one of those original CEP schools, where any child who's staying after school for any type of programming or tutoring or anything, they are, we get a free snack for those children as well to stay. Likewise, we want to expand that to the additional schools going forward as well. Twilight Academy, we do have some secondary school free options as well. We had Olympia, I think, two years ago, maybe three years ago, their Twilight Academy free afternoon, free afternoon snack program. And we opened it up to Odyssey this year, and then catering, anything we can do for catering. My staff love catering, so that's an additional, and they take pride in their catering. Future projects and programs, meeting with Food Link, trying to coordinate a partnership with them where we can do some weekend meals program and some way to partner with them. Had our first meeting last week, and hopefully that'll be something that we'll be able to work out that makes sense for both of us. I alluded to this, expanding the CEP program for elementary and secondary. Elementary is done, and we will be looking at secondary schools in 2021, probably targeting Olympia at that point, but Olympia will be going through a renovation next year, which will make it a little difficult when we're, our kitchen will be at 10 for a few months, so. Expand the afternoon snack program I alluded to, and this one's kind of exciting, the electronic elementary meal ordering program. It's just like when I was a little kid now, they put in their lunch order, the little slips of paper, and down, down it comes to the kitchen and the cook manager adds them all up and tallies them. What this is, we've created a cycle menu with pictures, so the students in the morning can use the whiteboard, and it'll have that day's menu on it. We always offer, believe it or not, elementary four options every day for entrees, and there'll be a picture of it, so the child can physically go up, find their name, push the button, it'll reconcile everything, send us directly to the kitchen, so the kitchen will know that classroom when they come through, how many of a particular item to produce.
And the most amazing thing about that is that it was done by, in partnership with the two RIT students.
Exactly.
Brilliant people.
Actually, and I have to thank Brookside, Brookside spent our beta test out there, and we're going to use it in our summer ESY program as well this year. And then we'll continue with our cafeteria equipment, kitchen equipment and decor upgrades. Running a quote profitable program really helps us in doing that, to be able to, we're, get the latest in equipment and really bring up the perception, I don't know the word to use, in, in the cafeterias, so give the kids a real comfortable environment, you know, where they, where they like to hang out in, okay? I do have a video which, oh, I'm sorry, this is, this is, this is my favorite slide, actually. To put it into perspective, we go through over 2 million cartons of milk a year, and this is just in 10 months, this is not, including the summer program, 261,000 pounds of potatoes, 212,000 individual burgers that we serve each year, 105-plus thousand pounds of cheese and 82,000 pounds of chicken. So, we're pretty big, you know, we're a pretty big operation. My staff take pride in it, they take pride in the fact that they're making things, so. This usually this slide, if I go and talk with other organizations outside of the district, usually is what my, "Oh, my gosh", so, anyway, so we're pretty big. I do have the video now, three and a half, four minutes, if that's okay, but I will make myself feel, if you have questions afterwards, okay?
Sure.
I don't know if Joe's doing this for me, oop, I guess I'm doing it. These are the before and after, we've done every one of the cafeterias with the exception of Olympia, and Olympia is scheduled for the last weekend, but this is about six or seven of them. Before and after in the seating areas of the cafeterias. The names of the cafeterias, the students' names. Thank you for your patience with that, but we, we take pride in that, so.
Do we have any questions? Paul, I just, oh, Michael?
Sorry, just one quick question, Mr. Palmer.
Yes.
You mentioned that we are able to keep our meal costs low because there's other revenue sources. I'm just curious, what type of other revenue sources?
Greece Christian School, Renaissance Academy, those other outside the district programs that we're, that we do.
So we're catering to those other places, okay?
Yep, we're either in their kitchen doing it for them, and, or we're, or we're sending it through them out of one of our other kitchens.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Farmer?
So, what do you mean by we're doing it for them? Are they paying us?
Mm-hmm, yep.
So is that profit, is that revenue?
Uh-huh, absolutely, yep. So out of Athena, Athena produces the meals for Greece Christian School. And then we do a courier program where we send it over to them, and then they serve it, mm-hmm.
Dr. Drew?
The schools that have gardens are there, I know there are not a lot of them, but I know like at Lakeshore, for example, they have a garden, a community garden.
Yes, we do use it.
That's what I wanted to know.
Let, I got the call about lettuce today, so, yes, yes, we do, and we hope to expand that, you know, with the additional programs.
Vice President Laura?
First of all, I've been to a number of the cafeterias, they look fantastic.
Oh, thank you.
And when high school students come in, the decorating, you know, they've, you've done a nice job. I also had the opportunity to have lunch with some second graders recently, and they explained your ordering system perfectly to me and corrected me, it wasn't a grilled cheese, it was a toasted cheese sandwich.
We don't have a grill.
I just have one, Paul, the program you're talking about with Food Link, is that to like, to use the leftover food? I mean, I was reading about a school district downstate that's doing that on weekends, where you're taking all our leftover food, sending home meals, that's what you're looking for?
There's one out in Indiana that was, the article was on. Little misleading, because the majority of the food comes from convention centers and hotels and things like that. We don't have a lot of waste, we're efficient, because we do a pre-order. So, it's not a lot of stuff that we would have left over, but, but we're going to explore the opportunity anyway.
Absolutely, great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 4.02, the early learning center presentation, Superintendent Groutmann.
Yep, I'm going to introduce Dr. Payne and have her come up, but before she gets started, just to put a little context to this presentation, when I first became superintendent, which is four years ago now, we had been through a consolidation and had been continuing to study enrollment. What's interesting about that, and I'll, I'll go back, as a student in Greece, someone who's born and raised, enrollment has always been a challenge in Greece for a lot of different reasons, whether that be new areas that are developed, new housing, we're large, there's a lot of things to it. But when I was growing up, it was very, very common for people in Greece, at least my friends, to go to two or three or four elementary schools, because lines were always changing. So, we started studying this a while back, based on the consolidation that was done and some sort of unintended consequences of that. And what I'm going to have Vale do for us today is share sort of where that led us. So what started off as enrollment led us to a pretty exciting opportunity that we're thrilled about. But what we want to do is make sure that we're being really clear with communication and, and making sure that people really understand what we're talking about going forward, because this isn't a really short-term thing, this is a long-term plan that we're, we're talking about tonight.
Okay, so again, tonight we're going to be talking to you about the result of an intensive, two-year study with the Red Group of our primary school facilities, and how we're recommending this evening to move forward in accordance with our strategic plan goals. So, how we got here, and Kathy spoke a little bit about that, but just a little bit of a history lesson. So, in response to declining enrollment and some of the changing demographics, district leaders were charged, an attendance committee, to take a close look at this with studying school consolidation options. So, as a result, in 2012, Apollo Middle School, Kirk Road Elementary School, and Parkland were closed, and several other schools were either relocated or reconfigured. Now, in the years that followed, district-wide enrollment has continued to decline. Most recently, we've seen a decline since 2012 at Pine Brook of 9% drop in enrollment, and at Westridge, a 38 decline, percent decline in enrollment. So, the number of families electing to send their children of school of choice is falling at the same time that student need continues to grow, excuse me. So, as Kathy had said, we decided, when she became superintendent, to take a close look at this. So we initially contracted with, with a group that had made recommendations around the first consolidation project to lead us in a student attendant zone study. The recommendations were brought to the board at our summer retreat in June of 2016, and basically the recommendations are, the solution involved extensive redistricting, something that we really could not get behind without more of an in-depth analysis. So what we did in 2017 is we then contracted with the Red Group, who's here this evening, and to conduct a primary level facilities. Now initially, we had charged them with looking at a structure that would allow our schools to all function like as pre-K5 configuration. So they did take a look at that, but we realized that this really was not something that was feasible, because it would just involve drawing lines all over the place. Some of our schools were fitted to be K2 schools, other schools fitted to be 3-5 schools, so it really just did not make a lot of sense. So with that, we talked a little bit more about it with the Red Group and the board, and we were charged in last fall to go back and like, relook at this. So we've been studying this extensively over this past year, and this evening we're going to share some of the recommendations from this, basically, four-year study. So based on the extensive research that went into this, with being able to offer the least disruptive option and determine whether a school structure could accomplish our goals, such as improving early childhood education and really just options for, for our community, and the research that the Red Group did, which involved 20 site visits, 30 different individual interviews with educators, program leaders, and representatives of various departments like special education, transportation, human resources. We're really excited to recommend this evening of transforming the Westridge Elementary School into an early learning center. Now, this would be a gradual phase in over four years, this isn't something that would go to happen overnight, it would be fully implemented in the 22, 23 school year. We like the idea of a small phase in, because that allows us to maybe make any mid-course corrections as we identify things moving through the process. So what is an early learning center? It's basically a school that's focused on early childhood education. Adding this type of structure has many district advantage for our students, for our staff, and for our families, and most importantly, it really and truly is aligned with our strategic plan, which is our guidepost as we look at different programs and things for our community. We have a focus on early childhood education, we have a metric of improving reading at the third grade level. That doesn't happen at second grade or at third grade, right? That happens early, and the research shows that when you have a real concentrated effort on early childhood education, that you get great results. So that's one of the things that we decided to, to impart with this decision. The other piece is around community schools, that's something else that we've called out in our strategic plan, and we're getting great outcomes with the community school model in other schools. So this is something that we want to bring to our Greece Community Early Learning Center. So, what are the benefits of this early learning center for our students, for our families, and for our communities? Our students, our families will have onsite access to counselors, to social workers, and to psychologists. What we're hoping to really be able to accomplish by having these supports under one roof for our earliest learners is to proactively close the evaluation and services for our youngest learners around some of the special ed services that are required. Providing services to young children with special needs is an ongoing challenge, not only in our Greece community, but across Monroe County and across New York State. So having it all housed under one facility, we think will really benefit our community. The other piece that the ELC will focus on is, and did you catch that, ELC? That's the new acronym, so committed to memory, right? The ELC will be focusing on speech development, listening, and comprehension to help students improve their skill foundation and, and school success. And I already had mentioned a little bit about the metric that we've called out around early learning and, and third grade reading. The other benefit to this is for the teachers. So right now, we have pre-K sort of sprinkled throughout the district. So the benefit of having an early learning center is a real concentration, not only on, on pre-K, but it gives us the flexibility to really focus on our early learners. And, and again, the research shows that having this, this sort of a structure with a real focus on early childhood education has huge benefits, so that we're not trying to do a Band-Aid approach once they get to fourth grade and beyond. The other, the other piece is around increased engagement. So, I had already mentioned a little bit about the community school initiative that we will be bringing to our early learning center. We really want to move forward with a model where we're bringing in partnerships. We're hoping to be able, some of those services that, that I was talking about, being able to think about, being able to house those right at our early learning center. So we're excited about being able to offer some of those types of things. We really want to make this a hub for, and, and make this sort of a light post place for our communities to want to come and to know that this is where we embrace and we welcome into our district our earliest learners. We want to be able to offer wraparound care for children of all ages. So next year, beginning at Westridge, we will be offering for our pre-K families wraparound support, so for example, that a parent could send their child to pre-K in the morning, and they would have wrap care service that would be offered in the, in the afternoon or vice versa. So we're excited about being able to offer that. Additionally, a stimulating environment, we actually want this facility to be state-of-the-art. We want it to look really physically enticing and, and, you know, really invoke the curiosity that play invokes with kids, and really bring that to the forefront at this, at this site. So we're excited about the opportunity for that. And then really equity for all, we really want to, we've called out equity in our strategic plan, so really and truly no matter what school a child attends in our district, we want them to be able to have equal access to this early learning community. So that's something that was really important to us as we thought through this as well, and it certainly is a benefit. So, what are the attendant zone changes going to look like? The early learning center eventually will house all of our pre-K programs that we have in our district schools, as well as sections of kindergarten, first, and second grades. And the district pre-K programming would still be offered, and we would still have our, our community-based organizations that we have, that we contract with, we still would be operating those at the facilities. At this point, we're not looking to bring them At this point, we're not looking to bring them to the early learning center because of space constraints, but we still would be offering those programs as well. The Greece Community Early Learning Center would be a school of choice. We would have a small attendant zone for grades K through two, but some of the children that are presently at Westridge would eventually be reassigned and welcomed over at Pine Brook and at Brookside Elementary School, so that we would have some new attendant zone boundaries. But really and truly, for next year, there are no really major changes. This is something that's a four-year phase-in program, and we're going to outline that for you. Again, this being fully implemented in the 22, 23 school year. So this particular slide outlines for you the gradual phase-in process. So for next year, it really is our communication year. We want this to be an open process in the how. How are we going to create a state-of-the-art early learning center in Greece? We want to have student voice around this. We want parent voice. We want teacher voice. We want various department voice. We really want to have our community involved in making decisions around what we want this to look like. So next year really is going to be a communication year, where we're going to be gathering information, doing surveys to really think about what this potentially could look like as we transition to this early learning center. We will be having subcommittees. So we will have a district-wide task force committee made up of different subcommittees, and those will begin next year. I'll speak a little bit more about those, but that's going to begin next year. Additionally, in the fall, just like we currently do now with kindergarten enrollment, our families will have the option to enroll their child in kindergarten, but the options now will be a little bit different than what they've been in the past. Our families will be able to enroll in, to get in, enter into Pine Brook. So they could enter as a kindergarten-through-fifth-grade student at Pine Brook. They could enroll or go through the lottery system to go to our early learning center for pre-K two, and then three through five at their neighborhood schools. So that could be any of the three-five schools throughout the district. Or they could also enter as, or go through the lottery to enter and attend the early learning center for pre-K two, and then as a three-five student, they could have access or they would attend Pine Brook Elementary School. So those are going to be the three different options that families will have, beginning in the 1920s school year. In the 2021 school year, when the transition really begins, what's going to start happening is grade three will be phased out of the Westridge campus, and that will have, oh, let me just back up. There was one other change that I wanted to speak to in 1920. We are going to be down, we are down one section of kindergarten at Pine Brook, and the reason that we are doing that, because that allows us to have additional space when that cohort of children go through the higher grades, because we're going to need space at those upper grades at Pine Brook at that point. So I just wanted to clarify that. In 2021, grade three will be phased out of Westridge. So I want to be very, very clear. Any child that starts school in the fall as a third grader at Westridge will be able to finish through fifth grade at Westridge, all right? But after next year, then we would phase out third grade. As we phase out third grade in the 2021 school year, then that would allow us to bring over the pre-K programming from Holmes Road Elementary School. The following year, 21, 22, as fourth grade then is phased out, that would allow us to bring over the pre-K programming from English Village. And then finally, in 22, 23, when we're, you know, really rolling with this, our fifth graders exit, and then we would have, that would be the last year, Autumn Lane, you know, will move over to the early learning center. So that, at that point, Westridge will more close as it has operated, and we will have this Greece Community Early Learning Center. So that's what the four-year phase sort of looks like. So what's next? If the board approves this evening, the creation of the Greece Community Early Learning Center at Westridge, what will happen is, within this week, we will be going around and meeting with all of the building's staff and also with the pre-K teachers, so that they're aware of the changes. We'll be notifying the Westridge, the Pine Brook, and the Brookside families of all of the upcoming changes. So that will all happen within the week. Within the month, we will be creating an early learning center informational phone line where community members can call with questions. We also will be adding an early learning center page to our district website, where we will be able to house and publicize frequently asked questions. So that's how we hope to be able to communicate with some of what is going on with this project. In October, in the fall, that's when we will really be looking at creating this district task force, as well as subcommittees. Those will be forming and meeting throughout the year to be able to make recommendations. Some of our initial thoughts on what those subcommittees would look like is, again, so that we would have representative group, and again, this is where voice can really be heard, is we were thinking that we would have a group that would look at literacy and language development, do a real deep dive in what is the quality, what does a quality literacy and language development look like? How is it really, really rich? That would be one thing. We thought we would work with some of the pre-K teachers around just instructional programming. What does that look like for pre-K? We want to have a group for special education services and support services. We thought that we would need a group that would look at facilities. What do we want the facilities to look like? How about transportation? At the same time, we would hope that we would have subcommittees at all of the buildings that are being affected, Westridge, Brookside, and Pine Brook. And are there things, are there recommendations, are there questions that those schools might have that would bring back to sort of this district task force, so that it's sort of like an accordion model with looking at things and coming back and making recommendations? And then through that whole process, we would be informing the Board of Education, and hopefully, maybe we would have even some board members that might want to sit on some of those subcommittees. November through December, again, we will be mailing at that time out the new school of choice forms for those incoming kindergarten families that I talked about before, and we would be holding our school of choice lottery, like we typically do. And again, throughout the whole transition, we really hope to use voice in traditional ways, through email, through phone calls, through those committee meetings. The other thing that we are going to be doing is using the Thought Exchange platform, and this is a survey platform that allows us to pose a question and then get information to help inform our decisions. So this is something, this is a platform that we actually used this year with our Code of Conduct Committee when we looked at our dress code, and it was a really, really helpful tool for us. So we thought that this would be something that would be super valuable as we really try to listen to the voice of folks around what we want this state-of-the-art early learning center to look like for our Greece community. And then finally, you know, I sit here this evening, and, you know, when we had all of these teachers filling the room, and our superintendent said, you know, "We want the best of the best, and that's what we expect, and we really have a desire to get with our teachers." I would say, "We also want the best of the best for our youngest learners, and how are we welcoming, how are we welcoming them into our Greece community?" Right? We're going to have them for several years, and how are we engaging them in an earlier way, in a better way? And we're very, very hopeful that this Greece Community Early Learning Center is going to help us move in that direction. Questions?
Ms. Farmer?
Thanks, Val. Is Westridge currently a neighborhood school?
Yes.
Okay. So as I'm looking at, and, oh, me, because grade three phased out at Westridge, third graders will return to neighborhood schools. How, what is, how do we?
So presently, because Westridge is a school of choice, at that point, some of the children would return to
So it is a school of choice.
Their neighborhood school. There's a zone, but students can still elect to come. So that was one of the things I had mentioned, our school of choice. People are not electing to do school of choice as much as they had in the past. Additionally, what is typically the neighborhood that is drawing the children from Westridge, we will be splitting that, so that some of the children will now attend Brookside as, you know, and some will attend Pine Brook.
At third grade.
And then there's, at third grade. And then there will also be a section that will still be zoned, neighborhood zone, if you will, for pre-K through grades two, or kindergarten through grade two. But then, when they move to third through fifth grade, it looks at this point like our numbers would support those students being able to attend Pine Brook Elementary School. So these numbers were scrubbed, scrutinized, analyzed. We looked at the current attendant zone that draws the Westridge, that is, that makes up the Westridge neighborhood, every way, backwards, forwards, inside, out. And we've had the RED group that has helped us look at those numbers, but we feel confident with the numbers that we have right now, that the children will be able to be welcomed into those schools. And it's important to know, too, in the 22, 23 school year, when we're fully implemented, we're talking about approximately a dozen children at each grade level at Brookside and Pine Brook. So it's not like it's this huge amount of students that are going to be entering those schools. That's what the numbers look like at this point. And then because of the lottery system, it does allow us the flexibility to be able to kind of maneuver that, if necessary, if the numbers, because numbers change, right? People move in, people move out, and that gives us the flexibility to be able to do that.
Okay. So I need more clarification.
Mm-hmm.
So if Westridge is a neighborhood school and a school of choice, okay, and the grade three is going to be phased out next year, 2021, and return to their neighborhood schools, where are they going? What's their name, is it, are they going to?
So there are some children presently that attend Westridge and might go back to, for example, they would go maybe to Lake Shore.
So they will go, so the kids who, so you're talking about the kids at Westridge who are, who, that is not their neighborhood school?
That is not, right, they've got in through school of choice.
Okay.
Okay.
So it's the school of choice kids who would be leaving?
Can I just clarify something for language purposes? So Pine Brook and Westridge are both considered school of choice, right? So those are the only two elementary that have ever been considered or named a school of choice in any way. But both have an attendant zone as well. So some kids get into those schools because they live in the attendant zone, and some kids have gone to that school because it's a school of choice, and they've gotten in. Through the years, at Westridge and at Pine Brook, there's kids in those schools from all over the district. So even though they've got an attendant zone, they've got, they might have kids from all different eleven elementary schools at Westridge, and so Val's saying that some of those kids may wind up back at their home school through this.
That's something
And what happens to the kids who, Westridge is their home school? Were they at the Pine Brook or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
The other thing that we looked at, or the RED group looked at very closely as well, is what the impact would be at those schools where the children would be returning. I mean, we looked at Pine Brook and we looked at Brookside, but we also looked at all of the other elementary schools and what the impact of those schools would be. And if memory serves me correctly, I don't remember that there was a school that was over like five children that, you know, that would have a big impact on any of the elementary schools. Those could be able to be absorbed into any of the elementary schools easily.
Mr. Swickie?
So Val, from the summer retreat, I thought we looked at the actual footprint of Westridge and said that was an ideal candidate, right, to basically take this in. Just cost-wise, are we talking, I mean, to revamp classrooms, or are we just talking about bringing in all the right-sized chairs and desks, and it's really a transport thing, or do we have to do work inside the facility to make it?
Actually, that's a really, really good question. One of the reasons that we made this decision for Westridge is because it was fitted initially to house our youngest learners, right? So many of the classrooms are already fitted for that. We've already walked the halls with Lou and Romeo, and, you know, taken a close look to see what the cost would be. And that includes what we're wanting to do with, like, wraparound care and being able to offer that, space for maybe offices, things like that, if we're going to be bringing in maybe more evaluative-type services and supports. So I think that the cost, Romeo, we talked about, wasn't anything significant with any sort of changes that would need to be done structurally to the building or anything like that. We're talking about maybe some changes aesthetically, you know, so like when you walk up and you see, this is like a very friendly early learning center, you know? So whatever that might look like with sensory-type space, we even talked about, and these are sort of just preliminary sort of visionary kind of things. But for example, one of the things that we talked about is, could we take the Westridge library? And it's a very, very large space, and yet we know our youngest learners really benefit from having space to be able to have gross motor and movement. Might we be able to offer that up in some sort of a way and work to be able to have that space more conducive to that versus a library-type setting?
Sure. Okay. And so just kind of a follow-up on that. So maybe, and I'm not sure what the resolution is tonight, and maybe we'll get to that when we get to that, right? But as we go through this process, I imagine we'll get cost updates and assessments as we figure out what's really in scope and what needs to be done, et cetera. Yeah.
It was the most cost-effective way to be able to do this. So again, when we looked at sort of the other options, it was going to be very costly to the district because it would be retrofitting the buildings. It would be transporting kids, changing up the attendant zones, and it would be disruption to every elementary school in the district. Whereas this has much smaller impact. You know, will there be some sort of a cost associated with it? Yes. But what I'm really hoping that we're going to be able to do is in those subcommittees, so for example, facilities, and I'm hearing you saying that you might want to be part of that. Like with the facilities, I'm hoping like to be able to look closely at that and then be able to make some sort of a recommendation as what we would like.
Sure.
You know? And the sky's the limit with what we'd love to be able to have. And then we talked to Romeo, and then he kind of says, "Well, let's be a little more realistic," so.
And we're identifying funding sources for some of those renovations to be for 2022, 23, when it becomes fully operational as an early learning center. Prior to that, we're working on funding sources now to get that covered over the upfront costs, and the minimums will be able to handle pretty easily. But as we have to change some of the classroom configurations or some color hogies or maybe supporting bathrooms or something like that, we're lining that out now so that it times out with the opening.
Got it. Very good. Good. Thank you.
Mr. Relcente?
Do we know, we probably don't know this yet, but busing, how this would affect our already strained busing routes?
Well, that's one of the things we're going to have to have Transportation take a look at, but in our initial conversations with Transportation, it's going to be minimal impact because the Westridge attendant zone right now is pretty small, so they would be able to go in, pick kids up that would be attending both Brookside, Westridge, or Pine Brook. I think one of the things that we're going to need to take a look at is, because there's not busing for our pre-K children, it would be parents transporting their children to the early learning center. So one of the things that we're, that Transportation group is going to need to take a look at is maybe even staggering times, and what sort of the drop-off route might look like as you enter the campus. That might be something that we need to take a look at, so that it's staggered, and what that whole process might look like with bringing that large amount of children, young children that are going to need some help into the school.
Ms. Farmer?
So I like the idea of the early learning, you know, the early learning center. I'm trying to figure out, as we continue to move forward with community schools, how does that fit into that? In terms of kids who, you know, say are at Infinity Lane, going over to Pine Brook, how does that all come out?
Actually, that's a fantastic question. So we're going next. Our community school initiative started at Longridge, and then we expanded to English Village, Lake Shore, and we knew that we wanted to go to Westridge next. So we're already looking at the community school model and what it might look like for this early learning center. So for example, last, last, I believe it was last weekend, we went over to Buffalo, and we looked at some community school models over there and what they're doing with early learning centers, and we're trying to garner some ideas that we want to bring back here. So for example, one of the things that's really, really important is having parent centers in the schools, and having a toddler's zone in that parent center, so that a parent could be able to come in, spend some time in the parent's center, but also have space and things for a toddler to be able to do while there. So that's definitely the direction that we're going. And then the other piece to that is, it offers up the community school resources that we have to be able to allow our Brookside families and our Pine Brook families to have access to that as well. It's interesting, because I was having a conversation with Kelly Spreduto, our community school coordinator recently, and she said, and Beth is in the audience tonight, she said, "I probably get more phone calls from Beth Boily than any other principal that's not involved in the community school initiative, asking about resource or needing resources for families." So certainly, it's a need all over our community, and by being able to expand the community school model, which we are doing next year, and doing it at Westridge, it's just a natural fit.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Payne.
Thank you, Dr. Payne.
Can I have Sony move the 2019 school bus bond resolution forward, please? Moved by Mr. Valente, seconded by Mr. Swicki. Any comments, questions, or concerns on that? Seeing none, all those in favor? That passes six to zero. Can I have Sony move the filing, please? Be it resolved. Minutes of the Board of Education reflect the acceptance of the Greece School, Central School District Independent Internal Audit Report Examination of the Volunteer Verification Process, April 2019, issued by the district's independent internal auditor, Bonadillo and Company LLP. Can I have Sony move that to the table, please? Moved by Mr. Valente, seconded by Mr. Swicki. Comments, Mr. Valente? Would you fill us in on the audit committee?
Yes, thank you. The audit committee met on Monday, June 3rd. Committee members in attendance were Mr. Cunningham, Dr. White, and myself. Also attending were Superintendent Lily, Megan, Bradshaw, Linda Holiday, and Heather Briggs from the Bonadillo Group. Ms. Briggs presented to the committee the internal audit report examining the volunteer verification process, results of the audit, and her recommendations, or Bonadillo's recommendations are before you as part of this week's board packet. The committee members were concerned with the results of the audit and discussed each of the findings and recommendations in detail with Ms. Briggs that night. And the committee does recommend that the full board accept the internal audit. Also, we recommend that policy 3150 regarding volunteers be revised, if possible, at the earliest possible time, and that the revised policy incorporates some or all of the recommendations recited in the audit report. Obviously, the committee is sensitive to the fact that it's not always easy to get volunteers, but also realizes that the issues raised in the audit report concerning the safety of the students and staff in the buildings is of paramount importance. But we do recommend that we accept this tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Valente. Any other comments or questions?
Seeing none, all those in favor? That passes six to zero. Moving on to item 5.03, the Sacra approval for Long Ridge Community Center. Can I have Sony move that to the table, please? Moved by Mr. Valente, seconded by Mr. Swicki. Comments, questions, or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor? That passes six to zero. Can I have Sony move the establishment of a teacher retirement system reserve to the table, please? Moved by Dr. Treewick, seconded by Mr. Swicki. Any comments, questions, or concerns on that? Mr. Swicki?
Mr. Colley, would you mind just giving a, a quick summary? Because I know I caught you in a side email on trying to explain the difference between two reserves, and it was helpful for me, maybe helpful for the group, too.
So, the question that we had was, why do we need another sub fund if we created a teacher or a retirement reserve back in 2015? The way the law has been set up is back in 2015, there was an employee retirement reserve set up. Under that reserve was set up an ERS employee retirement system reserve within that. At that point in time, New York State law did not allow us to establish a teacher retirement system reserve with this past budget from New York State. It would then authorize that school districts can set up a teacher retirement reserve, and it would be that another sub fund beneath your retirement reserve. So, now, under the same reserve, we have an ERS reserve, an employee retirement system, and with approval this evening, we'll have a teacher retirement sub fund as well. Both of those funded with board approval can be used to offset those expenditures on an annual basis.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Colley.
Any other questions? All those in favor? That passes six to zero. Does anybody have any questions? We have one anticipated bid. Does anybody have any questions on it? Seeing none, moving to the consent agenda. Can I have Sony move the consent agenda to the table, please? Moved by Ms. Farmer, seconded by Mr. Swicki. Any comments, questions, or concerns on the consent agenda? I would just like to thank the following groups for their donations they made. The Athena High School Extra Classroom Activity Fund, the Greece Olympia Extra Classroom, Odyssey Academy Extra Classroom Fund, Lowe's for their Garden Grow Project donation, Walmart for District Work Readiness Program, and the Greece Teachers Association for the donation of books they gave the district. All those in favor of the consent agenda? That passes six to zero. Moving on to item 6, 8.01, can I have Sony move the course approval resolution to the table? Moved by Vice President Lawrence, seconded by Ms. Treewick. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor? That passes six to zero. Can I have Sony move the filing, please? Be it resolved. The Board of Education of the Greece Central School District appoints James Walsh from the impartial hearing officer rotational list to serve as the impartial hearing officer for a special education impartial hearing matter. Moved by Ms. Farmer, seconded by Mr. Valente. Any comments, questions, or concerns on that? Seeing none, all those in favor? That passes six to zero. Can I have Sony move the filing, please? Be it resolved. The Board of Education of the Greece Central School District supports the district moving forward with the implementation of the elementary early learning center. Can I have Sony move that to the table? Vice President Lawrence, seconded by Mr. Swicki. Any comments, questions, or concerns on that? Mr. Swicki?
So, to their earlier presentation, and certainly in support of pursuing this, right, but perhaps we could just add some language to the resolution. I don't know if it's pending, you know, funding decisions or something that affects, or maybe that's implicit as we go to another level of approval, but I just want to be cognizant of saying, go do something. And if you told me it was $200 million to do it, right, we, we might, might have a different conversation about it, so. But I certainly support the exploration and pushing forward and the planning of it, but maybe at, at a later date, right, we'd come through with another approval of it. So, perhaps I, I need, I, if the, I guess I'd open it up for anybody else's comments on that.
Um, I mean, tonight, the way I read the resolution is just, it's giving the district steps to move forward in investigating and furthering the process. And then, as Dr. Payne said, as they finalize things and start working down, there'll be an update to the board with the cost, what the process is going to be, et cetera, at that point, like with transportation costs, et cetera. I mean, I think it's a little early in this phase to look at costs at this point, you know, like she described the entryway for like the pre-K, they might have to do something different for when they enter, start times, the busing, et cetera. I think it's a little early to tie that in. I mean, I, I won't even know what figure to use, but I think it's going to have to come back in some discussion form or a presentation format of what we've done. So, I think that, that should suffice, if that's agreeable to you.
Can I ask a question? One other thing. One other piece that I think is important to recognize is we are investing in our buildings all the time. So, our capital work that we do in an ongoing way has work slated for Westridge. And we have a lot of latitude in terms of what that work, work looks like. So, so if, I mean, we're not looking at money really significantly outside of the scope of what's already being, like, what's already been identified in our capital work projects, if that makes any sense to you.
It does. And I, I think if, you know, if we said we're going to pay for this within our normal course of operating expenditures and/or our normal capital upgrades that we would do for repairs and maintenance, then, sure, then, then it's just another, it's just replacing the sink in one of the bathrooms, right? So, and again, I, I have faith that we're going to review this and talk about this multiple times, and I just want to make sure that the resolution we put forward allows us to make sure that we, upon those presentations, right, don't, you know, sign up for something ahead of time.
So, would you be okay, I guess with, I guess it would be an amendment that the implement, implementation of the early learning center, funding comes with, comes from within normal budgeting or the general district budgeting?
I-
That's kind of restrictive, yeah.
I mean, it is. I mean, I don't know. I mean, I don't know what the answer is.
Well, because I think there's, the subtlety of this is there's the what. We're just saying, yes, we want to move forward with this. I think to Val's point in the presentation is the how, is all that stuff that's still, and we were cognizant around not going too far without stakeholder input. Like, we wanted to make sure people understood and, and were communicated with. So, our hope tonight was really to make sure that we, that we started that conversation.
Sure.
So, we don't necessarily have figures, and I would hate to put number, like, a language in there that, that then we don't write. So, I'm, I'm just cautious about that, too.
So, I guess, yeah, thank you. What I'm thinking is, is there going to be more opportunity for a board approval as we move forward with the plan, whether it be money, whether it be configuration?
There, there's going to be multiple facets based on however the funding comes. The board's going to have to vote either on a regular budget or an extra budget. We're going to have to approve the transportation expenditures. I mean, there's, basically, all this resolution is saying currently is that the Board of Education is giving permission to the district to explore established committees and do the research on doing an early learning center and start moving that process forward. I mean, the Board of Education is going to have every step of the way, is going to be able to vote or have input on the, on the funding, et cetera. So, I, I don't see the funding is that much of an issue. Go ahead.
So, not just the funding, but also the, 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 the how? Not just the money, but the how it's going to be implemented?
Well, yeah, we own that.
Okay, so, we will have multiple opportunities throughout this the next several years to come back and say yea or nay.
Yeah.
Dr. Payne?
So, the other thing, too, to kind of think about-
So, again, some of the regular budgeting processes that we do will help fund this. So, whether we're looking at curriculum monies that we already utilize, right, that we set aside for things like that, supplies and materials that we all already utilize, that we set aside for that. We have community school set-aside money. So, one of the things that we're talking about, for example, when I was talking about having parent centers in the school and having toddler's own areas in the school, these are some of the ideas that we're having. We can fund those through the community school set-aside monies. So, those are things, like, we're not talking huge expense. We were super, super mindful of that. Even when we looked at Westridge, I mean, we literally went classroom by classroom saying, "These classrooms have bathrooms in them. There's no new configuration that would need to be done." There would be no, because Lou actually looked at that and gave us some advice around, if we did anything in this wing, we would need to have some plumbing and things like that. So, the one wing, if you look at the configuration of the school, is already set up with gang Johns. That part of the school would house the kindergarten through second grade classrooms, where we would be able to keep the part of the building, for example, that has the bathrooms, for the pre-K programming. So, you know, really, within the scope, we were looking at this in the most cost-effective way. Might there be some cost associated with it? Perhaps, but I think it would be really pretty minimal. And then the other piece, too, is because it's part of a community school initiative, one of the things that we do with that is we are always going after partnerships, we're always going after grants, we're always going after different creative funding streams and going out there doing a needs assessment. That's one of the things that we plan on doing with our community school strategy in the fall, that we'll be doing that needs assessment. And from that needs assessment, we determine what it is that we need, and then we go out there looking for partnerships to be able to, to, to make that happen. And that doesn't necessarily mean at the district dollar, right? That's looking at what our community partnerships are and then how we're able to get some of those supports. Partnering with the county to be able to maybe provide some resources and offer this early learning center where, what I spoke to before, some of the evaluations and services for our students that have special needs are happening right there at that early learning center. So, you know, I don't see this being a huge cost. You know, will there, will there be cost? And when I was joking in the presentation around, yes, you know, the subcommittees might go off and look at things and make, make recommendations about what this potentially could look like, and then we get to determine with a recommendation what we can fund or what we can't fund. So, I think the purpose of the presentation tonight is, is the board willing to support us moving forward with this sort of a configuration and to be able to support this whole notion of a Greece community early learning center and give us permission to be able to move forward with how are we going to garner voice to be able to make this happen for our kids.
Ms. Farmer?
So, do we need to add an amendment that talks about-
I don't think so.
-checks and balances throughout the process?
I think you're, I think, go ahead.
So, I appreciate the context there, and, and I definitely recognize, you know, we dig on every single funding source, so I certainly appreciate that. And I, I don't think it is a material cost. And, and President McCabe, to your point, in terms of the other checkpoints that we'll have along the way here, right, as we review the progress, right, we'll have other points of interjection that if, you know, we do get that golden toilet we always wanted, right, we'd, we'd have a chance to talk about it. So, I'm, I'm satisfied with the resolution as it is.
Can I, and I just like to say out loud, because we didn't necessarily spell that out in here, but we have already, we've already slated a decent chunk of time at our summer retreat for the board, where we're going to get more into detail because there's so much of this that, that is detail-oriented, as well as the fact that similar to other things that we've done where we've come and done like a quarterly update and also used retreats throughout the year to keep you updated. So, that would also be sort of that, I don't want to say promise, but it is a promise, that, that would, those communications would happen and that input would be available. So, I mean, I think that's similar to the way we've done things, other projects.
Good. Thank you. Any other questions?
I, I have to ask one more question. So, based on what you just said-
Ms. Farmer?
Oh, I forgot, I have to hear my name. So, based on what you just said, does the board, through these updates, have the opportunity to vote yes or vote no, we don't like that?
I, I don't know necessarily that we're voting on things. I mean, so as we move forward, so, I mean, think about that. We're going to have stakeholder groups looking at different parts, like Val described, making recommendations. What we would be doing is bringing that information to the board. Now, that might mean, there might be things that need to be shaped or changed based on the board input at that point, but it's not necessarily voting. Like, when we sit down at a retreat, we're not voting on things, but you're giving input, and we might be changing or adjusting things. So, so I guess maybe not quite as formal as that, but yes, there would be input, and there would be time for the board to be hearing about that along the way and providing input, as well as being on those committees. Because that would be our other hope, is that we do have representative groups in all those groups, in all those subgroups.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? That passes six to zero. Can I have Sony move the filing, please? Be it resolved. The Board of Education of the Greece Central School District approves the disposal of the December 4th, 2018 capital project absentee ballots. Can I have Sony move that, please? Mr. Valente, seconded by Mr. Swicki. Comments, questions, or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor? That passes six to zero. 11.01, GEF presentation. Mr. Prestigiacomo, thank you for being so patient this evening. You had to sit through the whole kit and kaboodle.
It wasn't that bad.
Yeah, you don't have to lie to me. It was horrible.
Sorry, I have to head to Kathy's office. There's some air conditioning. All right, so I'm here on behalf of GEF, the Greece Education Foundation. My name is Joe Prestigiacomo. I'm the president of the foundation. The mission of our foundation, so we work side by side with the district. We are not a part of the district, but we do work together on a lot of things. We're formed to enrich and enhance educational opportunities for Greece Central students. What we do is when there are activities or trips or classroom items that aren't in the budget, there are actually teachers who can request a grant. We give up to $40,000 away a year to Greece Central classrooms, and we do that, you know, through the grant process, and that goes throughout the entire school year. I'll dive into what we're doing, but real quick about us. So, in 2000, the Greece Education Foundation was formed. It is a nonprofit, it's a 501(c)(3), and since, you know, June of 2000, we have given $500,000 back to the classrooms in Greece Central. No one on the board is paid. Everybody's a volunteer, so we have about 15 to 20 people who volunteer their time four times a year to meet, and we go through many topics, which one of the big ones is the, the grants that we give away. Some of the grants we have done here, so if you look at the first row on the left, this is in Greece Athena with Vicky Richardson. This is a mindfulness center. Based on my understanding, this is kind of like a, we'll call it a debrief area where the kids can kind of take a few minutes, calm down, and, you know, regroup and reorganize their thoughts. The middle picture here, this is a field trip through Greece Olympia. It's an applied technologies class. They went, they took the students to see automotive HVAC and precision machining, so kind of give the kids a different look, maybe some of the kids who wanted to go right into into the workforce, maybe go to MCC for a year or two to get an associate's or a certificate instead of going to a four-year school. And the last one is through Greece Athena through Melanie Lockhart. This is a paddling class. Again, this wasn't in the budget, but this is something different for the students to do. It's a great activity. You know, they're able to skate around the classroom, they have better balance than I do. I would not be able to stand on that board. But again, these are different activities that we're able to fund that aren't in the budget. And again, a classroom teacher can request up to $1,000 for an activity. And again, those activities or field trips do have to align with the district's visions and their goals. So again, that's where we kind of work hand in hand. Real quick, our funding, I'll keep it short and sweet so we could wrap up. There's three ways that we get funding. The first one's a little bit smaller, where people in the community can write a check to the organization. Sometimes we've had a couple people have passed away and in their will, they have given us money and have, you know, given a few hundred dollars to a few thousand dollars to the organization. The second funding source is payroll deductions. So if you're a Greece Central employee, you can actually have a dollar, $2, $10, whatever it may be, taken out pre-tax every paycheck and donated towards the organization. And the third one, which I'm putting a little plug in for, is our second biggest fundraising source. This is an annual event. It's the Eagles for Education. It's our golf tournament. We still have some spots open, so if anyone wants to play, you know, go right to our website, gressgiving.com, or if you know Ralph DiStefano, which everyone in Greece does, you probably have his number, or you probably ate ice cream at Buckman's before and know him. You can reach out to him and discuss ways to sponsor the tournament, such as a whole sponsor, which is about $100. You can do different levels of sponsorship as well, or a foursome, which is $400. So again, that's June 27th, that's at Timber Ridge, and that is our big event that we do every year. So that's about it. That's all we really had. We just wanted to speak real quick. We appreciate the time, and thanks for putting me right in the beginning. Appreciate it. It was great. You know, we had everybody here to see the event, you know, we could have got a lot of donations.
We could have got a lot of golfers.
We could. Sean said he's going to put a foursome together now, so it's put me exactly. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Prestigiacomo.
Thank you.
Board member comments?
Mr. Valzente?
I'll be quick, I promise. I know it's a couple weeks early, but I want to congratulate, congratulations and best of luck to this year's high school graduates. I am confident that our schools have prepared you well for your future endeavors. Please try to make positive changes in the world and always remember when trying to make those changes to be persistent. Many of the world's successful people are persistent, and that is why they achieve their goals. And to quote Jacob Rees, the stone cutter, "Look at the stone cutter hammering away at his rock, perhaps 100 times without as much as a crack showing in it, yet at the 101st blow, it will split in two, and I know that it was not the last blow that did it, but all that had gone before." I want to thank our colleague, Mr. Olberg, for his years of service to the district and as a member of the Board of Education. I will miss the emailed news articles. He probably sent us the entire Wall Street Journal some weeks. As well as his wisdom and knowledge, and I hope that he has a speedy recovery. Thank you to Lynn Armstrong for your service to the district and to the board. I have appreciated your assistance and answers to my questions, whether via email, in person here, or at the Isle and the Mount Reed Wegmans. Thank you, Mr. Studsman, for all you've done and for making me feel so welcome on the board three years ago when I first came on. Thank you, Ms. Weller, for quoting the elegant words of Dr. King, very recognizable words. And I hope everyone has an enjoyable and safe summer. I look forward to seeing the board again in September. Just to throw that away. Which we're thinking, sorry.
Any other board member comments? Ms. Dr. Trewick?
Okay. So, last meeting, I made a statement regarding the $100,000 that we paid to the State Education Department to expedite our building plans. And I wanted to clarify why this was important. It wasn't, I wanted to first commend Romeo and Lou. You guys did a, you guys did a great presentation. And I know this is what we need to do in order to get the work done, but it still ticks me off, right? So I, as the legislative liaison for the board, you know, we're talking to our elected officials, and what they understand are numbers. So I asked Kathy Grautman, our superintendent, to spell out for me what is $100,000, right? When we have to give that to State Ed to do their job. And this is what she told me. $100,000 is two full-time teachers without benefits. Four support staff, for, again, four support staff, again, without benefits. It could offer us three to four parent liaisons, 20 to 25 clubs, after-school clubs for our kids, by offering teacher stipends. It also means 120 of our kids in our community could go to a summer program. So I, again, I commend you for spending the money so we could get our buildings, our plans reviewed and our buildings fixed, but we also need our legislators to close that gap, to do what we put them there for, so we can have these other things. There are a lot of issues brought up tonight. Some were difficult to hear, now I'm transitioning to something else, around what we need to do in this district around equity. Difficult because we shouldn't need to have these conversations in this day and age, but yet necessary. Maybe if we didn't have to worry so much about some of these other things, we could focus on those things. Not making an excuse, because I think as a district, we are trying. I am proud of Ms. Green and Ms. Weller for being strong enough to stand up. I'm proud of the parent that came and stood up for what she believed in. This is what it's about. And I just want to say, as a member of this Board of Education, I'm also proud of this district, blemishes and all. Thank you.
Mr. Swickie?
So just, I mean, Mr. Valzente eloquently stated a lot of the thank you. So Lynn, Dick, Frank, thank you, all three of you, for all you've done for the district. And Frank, in particular, for me, brought me onto the board, well, brought me onto the board, he didn't do that, but he met me in Tim Hortons and told me all about it, right? And it was crazy enough to listen to most of it. And, you know, he was a good mentor for me, and I'll certainly miss him, you know, sitting next to me here. So, a couple other notes, just, you know, congrats to all those tenured this evening, right? It was great to have a full room here, especially my sister-in-law, Shannon Tidings. You may have seen my niece running around here, too, so she was a super cute one. And so, congrats, and as Ms. Grautman stated, right, we're lucky to have such great staff in our district and truly the best of the best. And just one note, I was reflecting, and I should have said at the time, but the seal of my literacy presentation was really interesting, you know, this evening. And, you know, reflecting on that, I've traveled a little bit, and I, you know, I went down, quick story, I promise it'll be quick, but I went down to Mexico, and I took Spanish back in high school, and I thought I was, you know, fluent, right? I thought it was all going to come back for me right now. But you sit through presentations for three days, and all of a sudden, I feel like I can speak Spanish, right? So I go to the elevator and I say, you know, "Hola, ¿cómo está?" And then, you know, the lady I was talking to started just, it was like rapid fire. I couldn't keep up, I couldn't understand it, right? And all I could think of were all the vocab words from my Spanish days. I could tell her where to go to the library and that I needed some milk, but that's all I could think of. So, so the point of this story, right, is, you know, these students here who have exemplified what true literacy in two languages means, right, opens so many doors for them, right? And to stay the path there and stay fluent in those languages, for the three students here tonight and the other ones that were recognized, they don't even know how many other doors are there. They don't even know what doors are going to open up yet. And, you know, credit to them for sticking with it. It's tough, I can't even imagine thinking, thinking and processing in multiple languages, it's a credit to them. So great presentation on that, really enjoyed it, and good luck graduation to all the graduates, and, you know, best of luck, hard work there. Again, you stole all my thunder there, you said it better than I ever could, so, but thank you, guys.
Vice President Lawrence?
High school teacher in May wants to wish all the seniors or juniors, the kids in high school, good luck on their regents. I look forward to shaking your hand at graduation, so study hard. I also want to do a shout-out to EduCare. I do it every year. We're so lucky to have a program like that in our school district where children can be well-taken care of before and after school. My own granddaughter opted for EduCare summer as opposed to all the camps we could offer her in town, which I think says a lot for her and the program itself. Also want to, I bet Frank is listening, and I want to, he thought he was going to come today, but I want to thank him for all his support. I look at him in two ways. First of all, he's a terrific historian, and he can always bring us back to a time in Greece when something happened, and that's very important. And he was a great parliamentarian. Whenever Sean and I got stuck on something, you know, you got to make a move, and I appreciate that, Frank, and we're going to miss you.
All right, wrapping up mine, I'm going to echo what Mr. Valzente said about our seniors that are graduating. He said that unbelievably well. I wish them nothing but the best. I hope all our students this summer, staff, all make good decisions. I'm already looking forward to the next school year. I want to say, there's so much I want to say about Frank, but I'm going to save it. We're going to recognize Frank at the September, the first board meeting in September, we're going to recognize him. I have quite a bit to say about Frank. I just wish him a speedy recovery and hope we see him in September. And I was looking off to attend a leadership day at Longridge last week with Dr. Trewick, Dr. White, Dr. Payne, Dr. Calicchio, myself. It was amazing to see what our students, our small students, are doing and the abilities they have. It was really a neat experience. I look forward to going again next year and expanding that program to our other schools and attending some events there. That's it. Superintendent Grautman.
I just have a couple things. One is just to say thank you. We have, like I said before when we were granting tenure, incredible staff. This is a challenging time of year, it's a busy time of year, there's tons going on across the district in terms of celebration, whether that be concerts, awards, all different special events that building leaders and teachers are planning that require a ton of work. So I just want to make sure that we give a shout-out to all those people who are working really hard to end the year and make sure that kids are recognized in really positive ways. And then I also just want to say thank you to the people who are retiring. We have two outstanding principals retiring, Sue Stryker and Cheryl Hurst, and Lynn as well. I'm not a principal, but some special people to me that I want to wish all the best in their retirement. I know we just said farewell and to our, with our district-wide recognition for the retirees, which was wonderful. And then I will say a couple things about Frank right now. So to me, I know we're going to celebrate him later, but certainly I have been keeping him in my thoughts and prayers as he recovers, which I'm so happy to hear that he's home and doing well. But Frank is interesting because I've known Frank for my entire time in Greece, and I've known Frank in very different ways. What I appreciate about Frank and what I know that I will miss incredibly is his boardsmanship. So if anybody knows the rules and how things work as a board, it's Frank. And I didn't appreciate that when I first became superintendent and as a principal and as a teacher, I didn't understand how important the role of the board was and how difficult it is. Frank has done an incredible job of teaching me, and he's also done an incredible job of teaching others. And I think at the root of it all, Frank believes strongly in democracy, about having an opinion, which I just talked about at leadership, but also about listening and being respectful. So I certainly will miss him. I appreciate his years of service and where, how he was able to move us as a board and as a community to be in a much more functioning state that we are. So I thank him for that.
Thank you, Superintendent Grautman. I get a motion to adjourn. Mr. Swickie, seconded by Ms. Valzente. All those in favor? That passes six to zero. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.